All right, Finance Committee meeting, April 13th will come to order. First, I have a motion to approve the minutes wonderfully supplied by our colleague Peg. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three to zero. Karen, do you have anything to say besides everything else that's on the agenda?
I do. We just received these, I mean, just received these, the management letter and the yearly audit from Scanlon. So I have a set for each one of the Finance Subcommittee members. So we have a big review, just received it, I think that when you seen it.
Do copies of these go to the councilors, the city councilors?
Val said she gives us the Finance Subcommittee. So if you want copies, we'll have more made, no problem, but I just got, Val just handed them to me, I just got back from a meeting and mine's on my desk along with them.
So you haven't even looked at them yet?
I have not even opened it up. Just got it. Hot off the press. She just received them and she brought them into my office.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll absorb those that we received.
So whatever you need, if you need more, I'm sure we can unbind one and make copies, that's whatever you need.
Um, I don't need them, I'm just gonna say Joe or somebody else wants them.
That's what I mean, we can do it, whatever, just let us know.
Okay, gotta absorb them.
But that's all we have.
As I recall, we don't have any authority over it, we read it, we may have questions, so we'll put it on the agenda.
Right, and there's nothing, oh, I don't think it normally goes on the agenda, but you can put it on there if you like, you know, it's informative.
It's informative, okay, good.
Or, you know, if there's something...
There's no public here, so I'm gonna skip public speak. We are going to jump to the item B, number two, $185,000 for the athletic field lighting. I've asked Jamie Webb and Superintendent, can you all state your names for the record for Peg to write down who you all are? Jamie Webb is the Assistant Planner.
I don't think we have, or maybe we have, like, nice different.
She's in charge of CPA, keeping us in check. And, just tell her who you are.
Sure. Tom Hogan, H-O-G-A-M, East Stanford Friends of Football.
You're also involved in design, right?
Well, the East Stanford Friends of Football is the...
The actual title. Brian?
Patty Donner, the Athletic Director at East Stanford High School.
They're taking up yours first, Amy.
Okay.
Just tell them who you are.
I'm Amy Gaya, and I am the President of East Stanford Friends of Football.
Okay, what was your name again?
Amy Gaya, G-U-Y-E-T-T-E. Thank you. Ow, yes, it bothers me.
You know her? Okay, as I am also the Chair of CPA, which is another story, I'm gonna go over this as best I can to present it to my fellow councilors, and then ask all of you to chime in and enhance what I have to say, or correct what I have to say. If I say something that, it's pretty basic, if I say something incorrect, don't be afraid to interrupt me. This is supplemental appropriation from the CPA, which was approved unanimously by the committee, that's a nine to, no, it was an eight to zero vote, I think one person was missing. Is that correct? As you can see by the sheets you have received, it's being funded from very, from open space and the budgeted reserve. The second page of the documents you received in show that there is a lot of money in the CPA account balances with before this, $1,163,000, $191.92 in CPA. The committee, prior to my arrival and finalizing, has developed what I call a project, what is called a project funding worksheet, which is really similar to a contract. The football group wants to enhance the football experience by having lighting and having night games. They anticipated this very nicely by when they had the field renovated, which the CPA paid for a couple of years ago, I don't know if you guys know this, they actually put some conduit in, in case they had to run, they hoped to put lighting in. A lot of the discussion centered on the use of the field by others besides football, and Patty will come up with other, but I believe soccer's a big user, there's track and field, there's other users, and I'd like her to enhance on that subject when I'm done. You can see that, under the conditions listed here, I'm gonna go over the important ones, these conditions allow the CPA committee, and the council for that matter, to receive regular updates on the project. There was a concern about the fact that the light poles would be installed on such a manner to accommodate future renovation of track and field, so there's enough room for six to eight lane track, so they were moved back a little bit, I'm correct on that. CPA grant will fund all the work and it has to be done no later than October 1st. These kinds of deadlines, correct me if I'm wrong, were never in the CPA contracts before. So, they have to be done by October 1st, or show good cause why they need an extension.
And why is, why is that different than prior?
There was no, it was open-ended. The committee discussion apparently before my arrival was, we need to make, have control of projects, know where the money is, and will it come back to us if it's unspent? That's the kind of thing they wanted to keep going with this, so that the CPA funds, or there's a watchdog.
Yeah.
The committee wanted that. That's why there's updates. They also want a little more publicity for the fact that the CPA is funding these kinds of projects, so when people see, they got football lighting and they didn't fix my road, it says CPA! And we could explain why the CPA money is only allowed for this kind of thing. So there's a project sign being up, there's a permanent plaque, there can't be significant changes to this without prior approval of the committee and the city councilor and the mayor. So, that's basically everything that's involved, there is a budget, which is the last page, the budget was carefully done, including a contingency, so the $185,000 figure that we are, we present from the CPA and which the council would approve, gives us a contingency slightly higher than, it's something like 12 percent, if you look at the line where it says 10, 15, 20 percent, that 182 is 10 percent of the budget, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, the budget, as this is submitted, was delivered by contractors that gave you estimates, or engineers? So that this still has to go out to bid, correct?
That's right.
So this is a project that you're fairly confident will have these kind of figures when the bidding is done.
That's the expectation. Okay. But you're right, this isn't a price tag, this is an estimate.
Estimated budget. But it can't go over 185 unless you come back to us. All the bids committed and it's not enough.
That's it.
You have to come back. So can you enhance usage, because I think that's important for the councilors to hear?
Sure. You know, we talked a lot, excuse me, about, you know, what other uses the lighted field could be used for, and we wanted to, we do wanna make sure that during the football season that the field is not being overused. That said, there's definitely opportunities for our high school soccer program to have a limited number of night games as well at the school, and in terms of, you know, the budgeting, those are games that, we schedule a few of those a year for the senior nights and things like that, where we pay Williston to use their field and their lights, so this obviously would be, this would be great for my little budget.
You don't have to pay Williston anymore, right?
Right. And I think also we just do wanna touch on the fact that we expect Friday night football to bring in more, a larger gate every week than Saturday afternoon football.
People are home for work.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about that. Additionally, we talked, I think looking to the springtime for even to be able to use the lighted field for more usage, we're considering starting a girls lacrosse program now, and that is a spring sport, and so a few evening games would also help very much in funding that as well. We talked, I know that football is starting a bike football program, and I could foresee, you know, having some evening programs where they're bringing in, you know, again, as a fundraiser, we also would extend to the community that should there be a fundraiser for the community center, or whoever in town, that we would want to share that, that space in that way. And also, you know, I've had some conversations and I've talked to Meredith Lee's at Wybrook Middle School as well, to consider how they might be able to use the field in the evening for any kind of school function, or again, for fundraising. I think that the idea that this is community space, and that, combined with, you know, understanding how much that Friends of Football have done for the space, and working together, I think there's really countless uses for, for the space. And, you know, again, we just wanna recognize that in the football season, we wanna make sure we're not overusing the space.
Good.
So with these night games, you said it would get, does the field today get the same use it would get with the lights, or you're just gonna shift some of the usage to nighttime?
In terms of just football?
Do soccer games, are they played on the field today?
No, there's really no reason to.
Okay.
I have soccer game on the field.
Because you have on the field.
So you're just saying, just in the event that you wanted to have a night soccer game, you'd have it available?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay. And the same with the lacrosse, would lacrosse use the soccer field primarily, but then night games would be in the football field?
We have a quite identical year, and they're gonna play, but there's plenty of spaces for, it will probably be, it would, it would not necessarily be on the football field all the time.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the usage of the field, if it will go up, because then the grass will get beat up.
I think the usage would go up, and that's why, you know, we would, I, you know, as the Athletic Director, would make sure that this was making sense. And we do, for our soccer fields, I spend a lot of time making sure we're not overusing the field, so it is something we have a lot of experience with.
Do you have a budget line item for like reseeding or anything like that, if the field gets all kinda chewed up?
That's what I was gonna mention. I think the Friends of Football is responsible for the maintenance on the field, Nancy, am I correct, that they're gonna do the maintenance?
We put in $20,000 per field, and year.
But do you budget the maintenance of it during the year?
We do, yeah, yeah, we have for as many years as I've been involved, which is 10, 12.
And, that might be said for even the soccer associations, they, they take care of the fields, baseballs, and then the, so, this, except for the electricity, this isn't gonna tax the school department's maintenance budget.
Right.
That's important to know, because that's a big CPA question. If we're gonna do things, we even had that for the boardwalk, who's gonna fix it, what's the maintenance, because that's an ongoing cost, and our budget's tight, so that's important to know. Which is why I think it's fair for the football people to feel that we have to be careful how many other organizations, although it's school department property, they're paying for the maintenance, so how many other people use it. But, I think the CPA committee wanted to make sure that it was utilized a lot more than just a few games in the fall, so I think that's good. Questions, Dan?
I was just wondering about the Friends of Football contribution, it says $10,000 per year in field maintenance, and I was just wondering if that was new, or that's been the average?
That's been ongoing, yeah.
And the lights will just fall into that category of field maintenance?
Yeah, as far as I know, there's not gonna be much maintenance on the field.
There's only electrical costs, utility costs are paid for by the department.
Right.
You don't expect them to be too high.
It's like $5 an hour. Yeah.
Do you have to increase security, like what, for night games, will there be?
We already have police detail and EMTs at all our football fields, depending on the game itself, say, or, you know...
Very big rivalry.
You know, we knew, we might add another police detail, I think anything like that would be made up for it in the game.
Okay.
There's no fencing around the whole thing, anyway. People could come through the Nauta Park into the back if they wanted. A whole nother subject.
That'll be a whole other request, Lee.
We'd like to build a 15-foot-high fence with guard dogs.
I know somebody they can talk to, he's running the president currently.
Do either of you have any question on their budget? I think it's well laid out, myself.
No, I had a question about the CPA, which maybe you can tell me.
Got it.
You mentioned that they wanted to add in with this form, more oversight, as I was just wondering.
Periodic project number three, update the committee required.
Yeah, so, there's just one, if it's gonna be done in October and there, there's every three months, we're looking at it?
Well, yeah, I think this is, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, this is like a template for our worksheet, some projects take longer than three months, the...
Well, the completion date was October 1st, so the three months were put in there because if, I think, an extension was granted, then maybe one.
Another.
Another report of the extension.
It depends, I think three months was the thought, that that's what the every project's update, I guess.
So that was just my question there, that's one's enough, yeah?
And the committee felt that that one was the one.
Since we never got any before, let's start one and, and we should have a final, I mean, if it comes around October, we should know, hey, it's done, and they need to report back to the committee that it's done.
Do you have this out to bid now, or?
No, they can't until we, we appropriate the funds.
So this is just kind of a swag budget, from what you estimate?
I think it's an educated estimate.
Research you've done on lighting?
You went to the extra step of actually talking to the contractors who we believe want to bid.
Okay. Got a pull.
And the manufacturer?
But no, it's not out to bid.
It can't be until we appropriate.
It's not?
No.
Exactly. It's not out to bid?
No.
Okay, I, I was, yeah, I was curious of that.
I think that's important, though, that when projects come to, if we get good faith estimates, that are based on, you know, architects, our engineers, anybody that can give us an estimate.
You know, that it's hard to get the contractors to give you...
Commit?
You know, the engineers can give you their opinion, and we don't do this for a length we're opposed to, but it is difficult, a lot of times you get a contractor to give you.
Well, I think we've all been through public bidding, and we know how that's gonna work, so if you, if this does get too high, you'll be back to us. Okay, does the committee members have any other discussion?
Right, it's very exciting, looking forward to seeing again.
Just making sure, the school department manages the project, you'd like there's a project manager within the department that keeps an eye on it?
My Director of Services.
All right, well, I'll take a motion to approve the funding.
Motion? Yeah, what he said.
Okay, there's a motion before us to approve the supplemental appropriation, $185,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed, three to zero. Now, where there's a, I took the liberty of scheduling a public hearing for this, so you guys can get started, because I know how long this might take, and you're trying to get it done for football season. So next Wednesday night, you might wanna come, in case the same questions come from the other six members of the council. Okay? 6:15 upstairs. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
It's exciting.
Thank you, Jamie, for taking the extra time.
See if we can get some rock bands in there.
I don't know if you need it. Well, 6:15, there probably be ten minutes.
So you know this, so Nancy, you know this is scheduled for a public hearing for the city council on the 20th?
Right.
No, but just so you know, that's what I wanted to make sure, I know he just said the public hearing, but that's the full council upstairs, and it'll be timed, you know, they start their public hearings at 6:15.
So Patty, I think it's really important that you be there at that meeting and the friends, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're holding our meeting until, Peg had to get something, so we're temporarily...
We're back.
And we're back already. Okay, we'll start with $5,150 from the reserve fund, from the city auditor's assistant salary. Val's letter seems to explain it, do you wanna go into that in detail, Karen?
Sure, I think it, I think it is very explanatory, we have an employee that has retired, and she obviously is due, well, by the way, her accumulated vacation time, our pay plan people do not accumulate, they accumulate sick time, but they're still paid for it, so this is her straight vacation time, plus her, you know, longevity, and this allows us to hire, hire a replacement, which we're going to hopefully start interviewing for in the next, in the next few weeks, and this would bring somebody in in May, which is when this individual is technically off our books. She's using vacation time now, current vacation time now.
So this is efficiency of operation?
Yeah, trying to, when somebody's off the books, get some, schedule to have somebody back in.
Okay.
Okay?
I don't have any questions, I figured it's obvious.
You know, the goal is to have somebody in, you know, early to mid-May.
You didn't print either?
I did, and I left them on the kitchen table.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that does stupid things like that, because I do that all the time, except on the chairs of many, so I would've been gone home to get them.
I was so organized today.
You have your phone?
No.
You have any questions?
I do have, I don't have a question.
I'm just saying you might be able to call them up.
Yep.
Plenty in the reserve, plenty you wouldn't give it to us if it wasn't, but...
Do you want the balance? I'd be happy to give you the, I'd be happy to give you the balance. Okay, after everything, all the things that are in front of you, and actually, anything that's coming to you is already on here, too. That leaves us with, boy, is this tiny.
Right here.
I, I'm, that leaves us with 43, a little over 43 grand, after.
And that's including things that I don't even have yet?
Right.
And the stuff that's here, okay?
Right, it's, everything's in there.
We're still gonna have 43K, but it is, it is almost May, so that's not bad.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, because you know what reserve is, and you can see what we've been using it for.
No, luckily we have free cash, too, so that's good. Any more questions? Take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve early money plans of reserve fund, reserve fund to be transferred to city auditor's assistant salary, maybe by end?
Mm-hmm. Second.
I just found this.
They weren't on her, all in favor?
Best we don't ask, Guy.
Okay, it's amazing. Okay, next item is $9,500 for the fire department.
And the chief is stuck at a meeting, so he won't be here.
Sure he's not watching his daughter play softball?
Yeah. He's meeting at the stopple.
Woo!
Actually, he contacted me when I was at a meeting, saying he wouldn't be here, when I was at one second of a meeting. And, anyway, I think his memo is pretty detailed, which we try to always provide, and, and I have asked him, you can see from the, from the, from the memo, originally, I've got this online, yes, is that, you know, these were being estimated, and, you know, estimated repairs, so the, the amounts were good, and, and he has been able to get these things maintained, these items.
Sure.
And, and you know that the last one, the three, the last part of the request, so we've got the repairs, repairs, and then you've got the ambulance billing, you know that that's usually a good thing, when we come to the council for a approval of a shortage in there, because that...
It means we're getting more money in, so we have to bill it.
To bill more, we get more, so that's not normally a bad thing.
So in other words, if they're asking us for money to cover in those billing costs, it means, oh, we're billing more, so...
That's right. That's exactly right, so that's a good thing.
Another obvious one for me, any questions, councilors?
Yes.
No? Take a motion to approve?
So...
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're an easy finance committee. $3,300 for the fire department, again, this guy, I don't know about him.
This is, this is pretty interesting, this is a little different, this is actually, you know, something that we're also happy with, something that's valued at 20 grand, that we're able to scoop up for 3,300, so this just seems like a win-win for everybody, was purchased out of the, out of the Fire Assistance, Firefighters Grant, and, and they're not using it for the Hampshire County since, back to 2008, they no longer want it, we've been keeping, housing it here, we use it, so we thought it would be extremely advantageous to pick up something worth 20 grand for 3,300.
Can you, again, Mayor, explain, what is this thing?
What they, what is this thing? What they use it for, it's, what does he call it? He calls it a rehab trailer, like at fires, it could be, you know, to, say it's freezing cold, and they have the trailer out there, you can have the firefighters go in there, warm up, water, all things like that.
Is that like a Winnebago, more or less? Kind of, something like that?
There's an RV, it's like an RV, I bet.
It's more, it really just, really looks like a trailer.
Okay.
And you can, you'll drive by, you can see it's usually parked out there.
And I assume...
But it's, it's really like to benefit, you know, our public safety?
Yep.
And things like that.
So Hampshire County's, you had this parked here, but nobody's used it in the other, other counties, any other cities and towns?
I don't know how much use it's gotten from the other communities, but we've used it, and we have the opportunity to scoop it, so maybe...
So when we get it, that doesn't mean they can ask for it, the other cities and towns, unless we're not using it. Unless we come because we're on mutual aid.
Yeah.
If we're asked to come help fight the fire, we might take our...
It no longer is universal property.
Okay, well, I mean, I know, shared, mutual aid. If you're asked to go to a fire to help them, you might take your trailer, okay? That sounds like a good buy. I'm always in favor of a goodbye.
Yep, I was just gonna say, this is, you know, one of these smart chopper.
It is in pretty good shape, I assume, it's...
Yes.
It's a 2008, is it a 2008 trailer, or that we've had it since 2008?
No, it, it's, it's a 2008 trailer.
Well, it's not that old, that's good. And it's not like it's driving around anywhere, it doesn't get miled.
No, it's in very good shape.
Okay, anything from the councilors?
I don't have more questions.
Move to approve from free cash, 2,300, to the fire department cap pool for the fire ground rehab trailer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I jumped right over the 32,000, sorry. This is from your department, Karen, right?
Right, so, as you can see, it's split, some is for the energy lighting, and, you know, obviously to pay the electrical itself, and the other parts, the other part is for professional services, which is supplies and repairs. So it's pretty straightforward, we have locked into a, we have locked into, a locked-in electric price for a supplier, and we, you know, we have a decent price, but back before, when, when utility costs were not out of control, it was basically like 65 cents, you know, six cents a kilowatt hour, not 65 cents, like 0.065, and we were able to lock in a little over nine, which is a really good lock-in rate, so now we can plan what, you know, on what our bills will be. So it's just, you know, obviously, the, the electric bills were a little higher, and also, we portion our, our solar credits through all of our, you know, all of our different accounts in the city, all of our different ever-source accounts, and this one has a very small percentage, so this one does, you know, we don't use a lot toward this one, so it's a little, you know, it's, it comes a little bit more budgetary out of us. And as far as repairing, you know, if you look in the developments, you know, such as mine, a lot of the poles are old, and it happens during the winter, it happens during a windstorm, we just had one, just, they just break, fall over, you know, they just rot and break, and... rot and break and...
These are poles holding just the lighting?
Exactly, holding the streetlights, these are just for streetlights.
Streetlights, because if it was an electrical, utility bowl, they have to fix it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those.
We still have to fix the streetlight, though.
These are just, these are, this is strictly streetlights. So when these poles, you know, hit the dust, it's a little expensive to replace them and obviously hook them back up, unhook them, come back up, so, so that's where the technical costs are a little higher. And, you know, we have, actually, we just had, believe it or not, one was, one was the wind, but mostly it's snow, and they're really just, it's just old. Or what happens too is the under, because the ones in development are the underground wiring, so sometimes we'll, we're ready to, the light's out, it's not the light at all, it's the wire underground is broken, so that's a little more expensive to repair than just putting in a new sensor or, you know, new ballast. So that's what these two costs are.
And you may have said, I apologize. So the first part, the twenty grand, is the actual electricity?
The electrical itself, yes, for ever-source.
And then the second part is to have a technician come out, if we have a pole that goes down to fix things?
Right, as you know...
Disconnect and reconnect.
Exactly, as you know, we own, we own the streetlights, but we also maintain them. And we do not have the capability here to maintain them. As a matter of fact, you'd have to have regulated utility trucks, like every, even though electricians, they can't do all of them, they have to have, like, I call them the bucket, the, yeah, they have to, they have to be, you know, regulated for that. So we hire out, we hire out to, we outside contract for that.
So this is really for ever-source, this has nothing to do with the actual pole itself? That's a separate line item?
The, the top part, the five-two-one-one for energy, light and heat, the twenty thousand?
Yep.
That's the, that's the bill itself, that's ever-source's charge.
That's a kilowatt hour.
But that's the kilowatt, but it's not the pole?
Nope.
So if the pole broke, that's a separate...
The bottom part is, see the five-three-one-nine?
But is it, but the physical pole?
Yes.
Oh, so they would, they would replace the whole...
We have to buy them and replace, yes.
But that's not the pole that holds electrical lines, it's just the pole that holds a streetlight. There's nothing else on it.
Exactly.
I think that might be your confusion. Right. Some, we have some like that, where they're just the lighting and that.
In all the developments?
Yep, yep, there's one near my daughter's house.
Yep.
Okay.
All of your housing developments have those. They call them decorative, but they're underground lighting, that's the difference.
Contracted utility cost, like you have contracted for kilowatt hour price?
Yes. We do it for gas also.
I'm curious, we have to pay, this is out of reserve funds, you didn't budget for what you thought it would be, in the sense that, because the streetlights are on from morning till dusk, you're not positive how long they're on or...
It's not that, it's the difference in the rates. When the rates, you know, were so low, we're basing it on what we used to pay.
Oh, what you used to pay, that's, that's all you have to say, understand.
Utility rate, you got it.
Utility, utility increase.
Yes, exactly.
Good, that makes sense.
Yeah, we all get that part.
Any questions? Okay, another motion?
Motion to move funds from the reserve fund to streetlights, energy and lighting, and streetlights, professional and technical services for the increasing cost of electricity and repairs with streetlights.
And again, that's already been taken out of the balance you have.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
So when you state a motion like that, it may have to be in the minutes.
That's all right, I read right from here, so I can do that, if you want me to.
Well, the only thing I need in the minutes is that we approved it, and who made the motion, who seconded it. So I seconded that one. Passed three to zero. So we did the three, three hundred, we did, we did everything? We did everything?
We didn't do the stipends. Do we need to do the stipends?
We haven't gotten more information on those.
Okay, how much more information are we waiting for?
She said she was gonna give me more, and I have to apologize, this chair, I did not follow up on that.
Because we have...
Do you have?
We have the...
We have some here, yes.
Other, what is the population of this?
What I had wanted, what I had wanted, and I don't know, I think she gave to me, did she give us what, we are currently paying as stipends for everybody?
She didn't, I mean, I took it from the budget for the mayor and city council.
But I'm, I'm looking at, like, we pay, like, the assessors a little bit, we pay...
Yeah, I, not everybody does that, but I have my spreadsheet goes out farther to all of the line items, I just printed these first ones.
And that's just...
I'm keeping a spreadsheet of it.
Oh, what other people pay?
Yeah. And then this is us, I put us in the last row, and then this right here isn't happening.
All right, that's just a, that's just a council, and the mayor, and the school...
This particular printout, but my spreadsheet goes all the way for what everybody responded to, and we just don't have all the details.
Do you want information on what we pay in the minor amount to stipends to other?
Anything that is considered a stipend that you have in your list.
Well, we pay, you don't have that, is that readily available in your office, Melissa? If it's not, if you have to just work out, I think Barbara might have that.
The...
The little fees we give everybody.
Barbara has them all. We know most of them, but why do them off your head? You're better off with the less.
No, I want something in writing.
Right, you're better off with the less than she does.
That way you know that we pay so many, we pay little amounts to certain groups. So I'm gonna get that, if you mind giving that spreadsheet you did have.
I can make that for us.
That would be great, for next meeting. Do we have a lot coming our way at the next council meeting?
Oh, thank you for asking, I do have, I was gonna ask you if I could bring that up at the end, I have one more that I know of, that I'm gonna put on the agenda for, well, I'll give it to Barbara for the agenda tomorrow. And then I'm going to ask if you would please schedule that for a public hearing at the full council meeting, so that we can, it came in, the request came in after, after the agenda, and I didn't want to amend the agenda, I prefer...
Well, we're gonna put it on the next agenda.
It's gonna be on your agenda, because I have plenty of time, yes. Yeah, the deadline for me to get anything on the agenda is tomorrow by noon. So this request came to me, it's a Thursday by noon, I didn't get it till the following Monday, and I did not want to, yeah, and I did not want to amend the council agenda for that.
So let me bring up a subject. That'll probably be the only thing on the agenda then, because we don't, you have anything else coming through besides that one?
I think, that's the only thing that I can think of.
I'm only bringing this up for topics of discussion, we could do the stipends next meeting. However, I need to schedule the next meeting for Thursday the twenty-eighth, because I am having my foot surgery on the twenty-second, and I will not be in the kind of cast that the doctor wants me to get away, he's pretty mean a splint, and he doesn't want me going anywhere. I'm getting my full cast on the twenty-eighth, in which case I can...
Do you want to meet that day?
Feel free on the twenty-eighth to be here. The point is, I have, no, I'm fine, I'm on crutches, that's not a big deal, except when I'm not in the full, no, my wife will drive me here.
I'm just...
I'll call you, I'll get you to pick me up.
Well, there you go.
Anyway, the reason is, the splint type of cast is too dangerous, I can't...
In case you bump yourself, or bump it up.
Yeah, so I'd rather be in the full cast, which is the twenty-eighth. Now, is that possible for you guys to be here?
Well, the only thing you'll have on it...
I'm asking my council meeting members first.
But the only thing you'll have on it will be the new request, correct?
And the stipends.
Right.
Because after that, we gotta do the budget, and I want to not have to deal with stipends, and I want to talk about those dates too. But how do you guys feel about...
Five o'clock still?
I don't know what Barbara has available. We, and we could be five o'clock, but it may not be in this...
Want me to check?
Is she still here?
No, I'll check on my own calendar, I have it. It's just our Google calendar, it tells you what, that's how we book our rooms.
Really?
Yes.
I could go on...
Well, that'd be great if that was available to us councilors.
It is, it is.
It is available?
Yeah, if you go to departments.
Oh, you mean it's on the website?
Well, it's not, you won't get everybody's personal calendar, but you get all the conference rooms.
But you know when there's, if there's a meeting scheduled for next week in this, oh, yes, there is.
Yes.
It's called the CPA, and I'm the chair of that meeting.
So you'll be here anyway?
No, but that's at six-thirty.
So you want to do it at five?
Hold on, no, hold on, no, that's next week, that's not the twenty-eighth, that's the twenty-first.
Let me just go take a quick look while you...
I could do five o'clock on the twenty-eighth.
You want me to take a quick look, make sure it's available?
Yes, please.
Twenty-eighth, six o'clock...
Five o'clock.
I know, but six o'clock media, is this conference room one?
Yes.
Veterans Council meets on the twenty-eighth, six o'clock, right here.
Right, well, you only have one, oh, you have your stipends.
So if we have five o'clock?
Well, we, we don't have to finish the stipend.
No.
I mean, to see if five o'clock's available, I'm sure it is, but we don't want to schedule it.
Can you, Dan, is that tough for you to get here?
Twenty-eighth, right.
Five P M, yeah, twenty-eighth?
I won't be here, but, well, five o'clock I would be, six o'clock is, is teacher's excellence awards, so, but five, five o'clock.
Now, if, if we only have that agenda item, then an hour should be enough. If we don't finish when the veterans come, we'll just, okay? I'm gonna get a lot of flack from my wife, but I don't care, I'm gonna be here.
Okay, so you're changing the twenty-seventh to the twenty-eighth?
This primarily for me, yes.
Okay.
Should I put that in there, primarily for Dan?
He promises to pass, pass out, he passed out his painkillers to everyone who needs me. That's on the record, I should show.
Yes.
All right. So now, the budget.
Right, did you want to try to do that too while we're here?
I have, I'll be in a cast, but I can do, I can do almost anything in May, I have no other commitments other than council stuff. So I leave it to you guys, we usually do three meetings in addition, we can do a regular finance meeting on the eleventh. We can do the, we can do the ele, what I really want to find out from you, Karen, is when department heads are available.
Okay.
I don't care which sections we do.
Yep.
The big ones, you know, we should make them limited to one day. How about if I let you tell us on the twenty-seventh what days are good, after you talk to your department heads?
On the twenty, because we're gonna be on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, sorry.
Right, right, okay, and just, that's great, but as long as it's, as long as it's the week after, I'm out of town the eighth to the fourteenth, so as long as it's, you know, the, the week of the fifteenth, week of the twenty-second.
Why don't we do the week of the sixth, the fifteenth and the twenty-third?
That sounds perfect to me.
We can do, and we can, we can do one on the nineteenth, no, I can't, CPA. We can do one on the seventeenth, and we can do two on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, for instance. Put those in as possibilities. All right, you guys, those are budget meetings.
So Tuesday, May seventeenth?
And because we already have council on the eighteenth, and I have the nineteenth to have CPA, twenty-four and twenty-five, twenty-five's a regular finance meeting, so seventeen, twenty-four, and twenty-five are budget meetings. And what I'll do is let you divide up...
One of those for you now.
Those are usually pretty long. When do we get the budget, the first meeting in May?
Yes.
Okay, so those meetings, we go line by line through the budget, and we talk to the department heads.
So those, those nights are work great for me.
They work okay for you guys?
Yeah, well, you know, we'll do it, those are...
I don't mind doing five o'clock, but I'd leave it up to my fellow councilors to tell me, I'm out of work, I don't care.
Five is golden for all of us, and the departments too.
Can you make five, Dan?
Some days you have trouble, it's okay, sure. He is, just a trooper. Those meetings could be an hour and a half or longer, guys, depending. Karen, could you be kind enough to make the, like, the school department?
Absolutely.
With some other simple budget line, budget department?
Yes, the big ones with the smaller ones.
The school department takes a while, et cetera. But I'll let you decide what department heads are available.
Right.
I mean, we have to make sure Nancy's available that night, and her business manager, that's very important.
Right.
Do we know, I was looking at what Val had sent in the last few weeks with the actuals, do, does the budget come, so there's a line item that says, I don't know, let's just call it city councillor salaries, twenty-seven thousand dollars. Do we, do we, is there a view of the budget that says how many people that salary is for, or just anything that says salary? Salary seems to be all broken up.
We usually ask that at the time.
Yeah, so it, it's, it, like, like, you'll go, we'll just do, like, DPW, there'll be, there'll be like a whole bunch of people on, in the salary line, there'll be like, how many people is, oh, well, there's five guys in that department.
Right, but it doesn't...
And they're all together.
But you don't have a view of it in the budget?
No.
You don't know how many people that salary line pays for, is what you're asking.
Right, that's what you're asking, the answer is...
We always ask that at the night of the meeting.
Yeah, it's not broken down like that, no. And some of the, some of the departments, you'll notice, are very simple, like my department is very simple, because you'll see my line and then my assistance line, obviously, it's two, right. A lot of the offices, you know, are like that, because we're small, but like, when you get to the larger ones, like, you know, the police department, no. And you, you usually ask how many officers, you know, twenty-two, you know...
And how many positions have not been filled is asked a lot of, of all the departments.
Right, that all comes up, but no, it does not say twenty-two officers at so much, no. And they don't all make the same rate of pay anyway, but it's one line, the salary is then it's broken down, incentives and overtime and all of that, like, those are all different lines. And, you know, just looking at our existing budget, you know, we'll, we'll show you, I'll give you a good idea.
Because the reason I'm asking you, because, you know, if, if, if you're a nerd like I am, you know, I am likely to look at past budgets, and if the salary goes up, I'm gonna assume it's because we have more people?
Nope, you're gonna assume they got a raise. It's not, it's, it's not.
Exactly. That's what I would have assumed, that we added a person.
Yeah, no, first of all, you would know we didn't add a person by looking at these, and secondly, those are all questions that come up, you, you know, when, as you're going through it, those are questions that, that are either brought up or you ask, and, and those are, the increases are contractual, you know, if there's a one and a half percent...
Especially if it's in a union collective bargaining agreement.
Right, there's, there's, all, you know, all the rest of the, there's one pay plan group, the rest are unionized, so, four, well, yeah, schools, schools, four unions, and we have one, two, three, four here, so we have a total of nine pay groups, eight of which are union, one of which is not. The one of which is not is the pay plan people, Melissa and, you know, and our staff here.
And this...
And they're, and it would be obvious if anybody was added, but it would also be brought up, you know, what those changes are, and that's what you do compare, and that's what you do look at, and those are exactly the questions you do ask.
There's step increases for pay plan employees, there's minor salary increases, sometimes there's a salary adjustment, because we have a new person coming in and they didn't get quite as much as them.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get that, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to view it, yeah.
The other thing is, school department's budget, we got that.
Yeah.
You got it, right? That's a breakdown, but we don't have control line by line.
No.
School department, that you know this.
Right.
But we have...
It is what it is.
We have the total appropriation control.
Right.
So...
So if we, as an example, if they had a hundred dollars and we said, no, you're only gonna get ninety this year, they have to take that budget, go back, and figure out where they're gonna save the ten dollars.
Well, it's exactly what they did with the mayor, I mean, they might do that.
Yeah, well, right, but, right, you can decrease, that is your option, you can say yes, or you can decrease.
Well, they asked you, can we have this much money, and you say, well, this is all I can give you, so the school board has to go back and decide what they're gonna do with it. And then we could say, we don't really appreciate that you're spending all this money on a trip to Tahiti, and we're gonna have to cut that out of the line, and, cause we can't cut a budget. Happened only once in my twenty-one years.
And just to let you know, um.
Oh, and Melissa asked us to do one.
It's, it's, it's sad, because we are at the stages where, you know, when we go through it,[1600.71]